Yes, what I do here is so I can see what the Council sees is just sit in here and then a little closer in case I have to come in.
Okay. Shall we go ahead? I think we're missing one member, but we were advised you may not be able to.
Correct, she's in transit.
Okay. All right, so it is time to begin. I will call to order the Planning Commission for American Canyon. And I will go ahead and lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Gao.
Present.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Vice Chair Malari is absent. Chair Navarro.
Here, present. Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make your statement, Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining us for the December 16th, 2021 City of American Canyon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format for tonight will be similar to that of an in-person meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV Channel 28 on YouTube and streamed live on the city's website. We will see members of the Planning Commission on your screen along with members of city staff. Our members of the public will participate unless and only. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum section of the meeting and on each agenda item. Please follow these steps to make your comment. When the chair calls for public comment and you wish to speak, click the raise hand button if joined by computer. If joining by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. You may receive a message saying the host would like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message, click unmute myself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial star six and begin speaking. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments. At the end of your three minutes, they will ask you to conclude your comments quickly and I will mute your audio once you're done. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city's website. As a standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. We ask for your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This concludes my opening remarks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. I'll go ahead and prepare for a public comment with statement. This is a public comment I'm about to open is a time reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that the speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or verbally comment on the item during the meeting. Click the raise your hand button if joining by computer or press star nine if joining by phone when the item is called. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law to take any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Planning Commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. Any handouts for distribution to the Planning Commission must be emailed by 3:00 PM on the meeting day. So with that, I will open public comment.
Looks like we have Justin Hamilton-Holm.
Okay.
Mr. Holm, I have asked you to unmute yourself.
Hello, Ms. Holm, thank you. This is Justin from American. I've been here when I'm two. Merry Christmas to you all, this is the last meeting, 2022. My question is, I'm very patient, thank you for Fred Cooper stepping up because he is a great guy, amazing person. I know I'm very patient. That new three, four, three, four, three, five house. The hill still there, I didn't know. I don't know when to build a house. I'm very patient, we need new sidewalk over there. Thank you, Fred Cooper. If you update, let me know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holm. Is there any other public comment, Ms. Jones?
I am not seeing anyone raise their hand. If you do have comment that is for anything that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody is raising their hand.
Okay. All right, with that, I will close public comment. And double check, is there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Chair Navarro, we have no changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay, excellent. So the next item then will be the consent calendar, where we will approve the minutes of October 28th meeting, and then also the calendar for next year, 2022, for our meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Has everybody reviewed the minutes and the meeting calendar?
Chair Navarro, I move to approve the entire consent calendar.
Okay.
Second that motion.
All right. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gao.
Aye.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Malari is absent, Chair Navarro.
Aye. Okay, the consent calendar is approved. Next item is to open a public hearing for the Napa Cove design permit.
And William Hee will give a presentation on this project.
Excellent, you have the floor, Mr. Hee.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, let me pull up my slide. All right, can everybody see okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Chair Navarro, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. Very happy to be here today to give a presentation on this very special project, the Napa Cove Design Permit. So here's the overview, I want to talk about the location of it, where the project is proposed. The project features itself, and then I have more than a handful of site-specific issues, but I'll go over them one by one. And lastly, we'll go into the CECL info and staff's recommendation. Let's get right into it. The project, Napa Cove location is right north of the Melvin Tennis Courts Park. So to the north of the site is Canyon Cafe, then to the east is the Fairfield Inn and Antonina Commercial Center. Then to the south, we have Melvin Park as well as the Mosquito Abatement District and the Jehovah's Witness Church. Then to the west, we have the single-family home at Melvin Road. The site is relatively flat, it's vacant, and it's about 3.47 acres in size in total. Here's the site features, the project features. The applicant is CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development, and they are proposing 66 affordable apartment units on the site. This is in the Broadway Residential Zone, so multifamily apartments are permitted use. And the 66 units will be in two- to three-story buildings. There's three buildings overall, and they range from single-bedroom to two-bedroom to three-bedroom units. The site has a children's playground area, a community building, and that within the community building, there's some computer lab space as well as office space. All the buildings on site will exceed the state energy efficiency standards by 15% as required by the Broadway District specific plan. And about parking, there's one more change that happened today. There's going to be 119 parking spaces proposed, and I'll get into why there's a reduction of four, next slide. There's 1.03 acres of landscaping and 40 bicycle parking spaces on the site. So here's the site plan. Very interesting site overall. The three buildings, A, B, and C. In previous configurations, you might have seen that the site was going to take access off the Highway 29, but the latest configuration has the site taking only vehicle access from Melvin Road, and they're actually going to be using an existing driveway, which is now serving Melvin Park as well as Mosquito Abatement District. The site will provide 52 covered parking stalls, which is spread out in the north and southeast area. And I want to mention the four parking spaces that the applicant thinks is proposing to remove. And I'm showing them in orange here, so there's one in the south of Building B. I mean, there's two here, and it's because they have to move a utility transformer off of the site here, and that will take up two spaces. And the other two spaces that they foresee that they will lose is they need to make two spaces for the US Postal Office. So in the end result, it'll be 119 parking spaces overall. The site does include a fire emergency vehicle access that leads to Highway 29, and there will be a new 12-foot-wide multi-use path along Broadway on their eastern branch. Lastly, we'll get to this a little bit later, but I want to mention that there is an open space area on the southeast side of the site, about 0.48 acres, which the applicant proposes for future development. So here are the site-specific issues. I'll read them really quickly and we'll go over one by one. So the site has affordable housing, I want to talk a bit about the architecture as well, onsite amenities. Have a small diagram about the bicycle and electric vehicle parking, and we'll go over Broadway site access as well as Melvin Road site access. And we'll talk about the Melvin Road improvements as well. And we want to talk about how the parking reduction was considered and why it became that way. Then lastly, the site also has some utilities that the applicant will underground, and we'll go over the public outreach efforts as well as the lot line adjustment, let's say. So. Let's start with the affordable housing component. The project proposes 66 affordable units, and one of their requests from the beginning was that, you know, they wanted to work with staff on an expedited review process so to ensure their tax credit financing deadline. And we did work with their team, and from submill to public hearing notice was a little bit under two months. So it was a really quick review process, but we're here today. Of the 66 affordable units, 13 of them will be below 30% of the area me and income, which is very hard to find in the county. And 13 of those units will be below 40%, 39 units will be below 60%, and there'll be one manager unit on site. So with the affordable units, the applicant has requested few incentives for the project. First one is to reduce parking requirements from 141 to the 119 parking spaces, which is a reduction of 22, about 15% less than required. And then there is a reduction for building separation from 35 feet to 30 feet and two inches. This is that gap between Building A and C. And the last thing is to reduce the areas for balconies and patios from eight feet to five feet in depth. So those are a few items that the applicant requested to help them with their project, and staff looked at those items and found that all of those items do not impact the health and safety, health and safety codes of the project. Architecture. The project proposes a modern industrial look for their architecture. Nice buildings with the three main colors would be a brick red, a tan color, and stone accents along the center. The architecture is similar to the Home Two Suites, which was approved a year ago. And here are two views from, first one is south of Building A, and then the second one is a view from Melvin Park and Tennis Courts. Next, I have two more views of the elevations. The one on the top is the view that you'll see from the highway, from the east side of the site. Then the other one will be the west side of the site facing Melvin Road. I want to talk a bit about the onsite amenities. So they will have a community building as well as a children's playground area. But there's also like foul retention areas for stormwater, decorative paving. There's covered parking, as I've shown in the site plan in the beginning. And bike racks and bike station, I mean, bike lockers. So here's some of their onsite amenities. There's going to be a three-rail fence on the front of the site, which is facing Highway 29. Then there's a good neighbor fence that's on the northern border of the site. One of the conditions that staff wants to add that we kind of missed when we were doing this, the staff report last week, is that we want to add a condition that says the good neighbor wood fence shall be painted or stained to match the tan color of the building. And I'll remind the planning commission that at the end of the presentation. Moving on to bike parking and EV parking. This is a site plan that's a more closer, a close-up plan view of the three buildings. The applicant has provided 40 bike parking spaces, and the site requires seven. So it's more than is required by the municipal code. The yellow squares that I've shown are the uncovered bike parking spots, and the orange squares are the bike lockers. So they did take some time into considering where to put the bike parking spot so it's more spread out instead of having it all in one centralized place. So if you're going to Building B, there's bike lockers there, and then going to Building C, there's some bike parking near you as well. The EV charging station, they have 10. They have four that's covered, and then six that's uncovered. I'm showing them in the blue spaces on the plan. And the city doesn't have a municipal code requirement for EV charging, but the billing code requires, I believe, for their 66 units to provide 10 EV-ready charging spaces, but they're providing 10 charging spaces overall, so. So the bike parking code exceeds 33 stalls, exceeds the code by 33 stalls, about 420% exceeding. EV stations exceed code requirements. Oh, and then there's the 12-foot multipurpose path along the Broadway frontage in the east there. That's another thing that they're providing on site. So Broadway, Highway 29 access. So as I mentioned earlier, the Broadway plan encouraged the limiting of access to Broadway. And in their original design, the applicant proposed two points of access to Broadway. The project was reviewed by the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and they requested that the project remove all their vehicle access from Broadway. This makes it easier for future bike lanes to be implemented, but it also gives some relief to applicants so they don't have to apply for a Caltrans encroachment permit for access. One of the things that Public Works Department and the applicant have talked about is the frontage. In order for them to do frontage improvements for that 12-foot path, they need to get a separate type of Caltrans encouragement permit. And the applicant requests to modify one of the conditions to allow them to obtain their site improvement plans while they are still working on the Caltrans encouragement permit for frontage. So that's the second item that staff recommends or as a modification to the rescue. They still will have two fire district EVA emergency access. They still, and the site has increased land available for onsite parking with the reduction of the access points. I can show you that in the next. So here's the before, the previous site plan, where it's the two access points going in and out of Highway 29. And the previous plan also proposed new Melvin entry on the west side. And yeah, that was the old one, and here's the after. So the new configuration removes both the access points on Highway 29, and instead of using a new entry, which would have two entries on Melvin, they're going to work with the city to get an easement to use the existing Melvin driveway to enter the site. That kind of frees up this area to the north of there, of the existing driveway, and allows them to install more parking for the site overall. I'll show you one more time, so this is the before, and this is the after. So next up is the Melvin Road access. Here's a close-up of that entryway. The project will use an existing driveway, city property, and they will utilize the strip north of that driveway for additional parking. I think it's additional 20 parking spaces up there. Melvin Road improvements. So we know that with this project, there will be a bit more traffic to Melvin Road. The traffic study, they have provided a traffic study, an updated one, I think just two days ago, but staff needs more time to review it. And there's two conditions on the project to ensure that the applicant will be working with staff for Melvin Road improvements. Condition 71D requires applicant project engineer to analyze the traffic impact and recommend implementing traffic calm measures. And then 74C requires applicant to provide updated traffic impact study. So that leads into the parking reduction. I kind of hinted at how the site evolved over time. In the beginning, the site plan, the first site plan, proposed 84 parking spaces, and that's, they're allowed by state law to have as little as 84 parking spaces for the 66 units. With the removal of the Broadway driveway, it increased by 17 parking spaces to 101. And then with the, using the existing Melvin Park driveway, increased to, increased 22 to 123. And then unfortunately, after today's analysis, there's a decrease of four of the utilities and USPS. So the site overall will have 119 parking spaces. Next, we have overhead utilities. We've talked about this issue before on other sites. Broadway District specific plan requires new development to underground onsite and utilities that are funding their property. There are three utility poles on this site, and I think there's, I have photos of all three of them here. And the applicant has agreed to underground the poles as well as the wires for the utility pole systems. Outreach, the applicant started pretty early in doing public outreach. In September 20th, they conducted mailouts to all the property owners within the 300 feet. And received no comments from their first round. And then the second round, staff mailed neighborhood notices on November 3rd. And then we had our formal public notice letters sent on December 3rd, a month later. Did not receive comments for the project. Then there was two comments that came in today by. One was wanted some clarification about the traffic on Melvin, and then another was a comment of support from Canyon Cafe. Last item is the lot line adjustment. As I mentioned, the site is composed of three parcels. I'm showing all three in different colors. The project is required to merge all three of them into one lot. And the lot that's on the southeastern side, this blue line is kind of where the project ends. And they are proposing the half-acre site, the 0.48 acre site for future development. And there's a condition in the staff report that requires them to merge all three sites into. So, and that's it. That's all the site-specific issues. Environmental review. Environmental review, the site is within the Broadway District specific plan. Applicant did a environmental assessment and found that there was, through an addendum, and found that there were no new mitigation measures required. And it complies with the California environment. So with all that being said, staff recommends approval of the Napa Cove Design Permit Resolution with two modifications. One is to add a condition of approval for the that says prior to the issuance of a final occupancy, the six-foot put-in your neighbor fence shall be stained or painted to match the tan color. And the second modification for condition seventy-six D will say obtain a Caltrans encouragement permit to allow the widening of State Route twenty-nine and construction of the frontage improvement within the state right-of-way. But if the state right-of-way twenty-nine frontage improvement plans are prepared as a separate set of plans from the site improvement plans, then this condition will only apply to the state ground twenty-nine and frontage plans. That's all that I have. Our Public Works team is here as well as the applicant is here. And I'll be around if you have any questions.
Quick question, if I could intervene. You've mentioned in your presentation, there was a condition seventy-one?
Yes.
You didn't have that in your last slide. Is that maybe something we need to not forget?
No, these are already in there. Yeah, these two are already in there. So I just wanted to let the planning commissioner know that that's how they will analyze the Melvin Road improvements.
Okay, apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. These two are the new ones that staff recommends.
Okay, so thank you very much. The very detailed project in such a short period of time. I can just imagine the amount of work and communication involved in doing this, so thank you. Do commissioners have questions or should we first hear from, next hear from the applicant?
I'd say hear from the applicant.
Okay. So, Mr. Hess?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, here we are again. Another project, another opportunity. And first, I would like to commend William on doing such a thorough job. As he stated, this has been expedited by the city. And I think it goes to really show that the city is interested in working with new development projects. We've been able to have bi-monthly meetings with the PRC team. And William probably feels like almost on a daily basis, there's been communications gone back and forth. But what we've tried to do is make sure that we're addressing any concerns or thoughts that went into it. With this being one of the first projects that will have the, that will start instituting the Broadway District improvements, we had to, we had to address issues of, you know, where do we put the sidewalk? How are we going to widen the street? What's it going to look like? This is really going to set the tone for other projects that come in under the Broadway District Plan. And I would like to give the, you know, Public Works and Paul Wade has certainly spent a lot of time as well as the rest of the staff in analyzing and looking at this, you know, how we begin to implement the Broadway District Plan. This project is a, I think is exactly what was envisioned. Both architecturally, the zoning is what was envisioned for this property. And it's an ideal project here for Broadway. I would also like to say, when you approved of my project up at Oath Hill, I made a commitment that I would use my best efforts to, if you allowed me to pay the in lieu of fee, to bring in affordable housing project to fruition and for construction within the city. Fortunately, I was able to team up with the CRP. They are a highly respected developer of affordable units and have built all around the Bay Area, Southern California, as well as back east and other areas. And so what we're able to do is submit an application to the state to acquire the financing for the affordable housing. And we're under, we're able to get the disaster relief for those counties that experienced fires, Napa County being one of them. There was special funds that were set aside, but it's an extremely short window of time from when you submit your application for financing to when you're awarded. And then once you're awarded those, your project's been selected, it's even a shorter timeframe to get the project approved as well as the, be in a position to pull building permits. So staff has, we've worked extensively with staff to accomplish those goals. This is the first part, getting the project approved. And on January third, we'll be submitting the architectural drawings as well as the civil drawings for permitting purposes. We expect to have building permits and site plan permits pulled by mid-March, which would then allow construction to begin by early summer. So this isn't one of those projects that sit around, you know, well, okay, we approved it, when's it going to start? This is a project that will get under construction realistically within twelve months of when we began the process and gone through and got entitlements as well as permits. So I think the developer CRP should be congratulated on the efforts that they've put out. They've got a great team and the entire team is available tonight, whether it be the civil engineers, the architects, landscape architects, et cetera, for any technical questions. But we're all moving forward. I think this is a great project. The other thing that we talked about early on was after the Hampton Inn project that you recently approved, there was an extensive amount of conversation that went on regarding bicycle parking. And as William had indicated, we talked about it and worked really hard to find places within the project. And as William showed on one of the earlier slides, we exceed the current requirements by four-hundred-and-seventy percent of what is currently required. Additionally, there was a lot of talk about EV chargers. We've exceeded what the requirements are with the EV chargers. And we also have, have, or will have provided in our construction documents conduit that will provide for future demand for additional EV chargers as demand grows over a period of time. Another big issue we had at the Hampton was the overhead utilities. We're already on board with that, as William showed. We'll be undergrounding all of those utilities. And then in terms of the Melvin Road, we did have the traffic engineer that prepared the traffic report. Originally, when we had driveways proposed to enter and exit onto Broadway, that traffic report was done. But here in the eleventh hour, when the staff came back and requested that we eliminate that, we're able to get our civil drawings done right away and get that presented so you can see that tonight. And that is, the city certainly worked with us on trying to come up with a solution for access out to Melvin. And I think that using that joint driveway with the driveway that goes to the mosquito abatement and the Melvin Park was a great solution and it did allow us to add the additional parking in the existing easement that is on the, that goes out to Melvin Road. I will just say for planning, planning will do a further review of that updated traffic report. But in that new traffic report, there aren't, there are no new mitigation measures. And we are compliant. It won't cause any additional requirements having access strictly from Melvin Road. We also work with the Fire Department regarding the emergency vehicle access to the property. So unlike, you know, we had to work really hard at Hampton Inn to get access off of Bolt Donaldson and twenty-nine. In this case, we do have two emergency access to the property, which I think is, you know, we've tried to hit on all the things that have been of concern to the planning commissioners and city council members on projects here on Highway twenty-nine. And I think we have successfully accomplished all of the, not just concerns, but comments and wishes that through joint meetings that both planning and council have had over the last few months regarding developments along Highway twenty-nine and in the Broadway District Plan. I don't know that there's any technical information that we could add at this point. Obviously, I think this is extremely exciting for the city to get this project. And you have the chance tonight to approve this project and we can get, keep moving forward and get this approved. With that, I will turn it back over to planning commissioners for any questions. And then we can have the appropriate consultants answer any of the specific questions that you might have. But thank you for the time. Thank you for your consideration. And I look forward to getting approval and moving on. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Appreciate it. I'm thinking before we go to commissioner questions that we open public comment, if there is any?
Yes, we have a few hands raised. So I'm going to try and catch you in the order that you raised your hand. Beth Marcus?
Good evening, Planning Commissioner. How are you this evening?
Well, thank you.
I just got home from work, so I just got on to this late. And of course, you all know I live on Melvin Road. And I'm just curious what the traffic calming ideas that you have for this? Because as you know, we are the frontage road to the highway and it is packed every morning, every evening when there's an accident on the highway, you can't even get down the street.
Okay. Is that it? That is a question? Go on to further public comment and then we can get that question answered.
Okay.
Next, we have Carlota San Antonio.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm muted. I'm good. I'm muted now?
Yes.
This is Carlota Sanado Program Manager with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition. Thanks to William for the presentation and to the applicant for the additional information. We're really glad to see some much-needed affordable housing coming to the area, particularly this project being in such a fairly central location in the city in walking and biking distance of many destinations. We want to commend the applicant for not only going above and beyond on the quantity of bike parking, exceeding what is required by code, but for also providing a long-term bike storage option. It's really important that residential projects like these have both long-term and short-term options available to residents to meet various needs of residents and guests. So we're really glad to see that in the project. And we also appreciate the contribution of multi-use path along Broadway and the alteration of the highway driveway access following feedback from the Transportation Authority. As we look forward to improving multimodal access along SR twenty-nine per the Broadway Plan, we have to continue to consider decisions like these to preserve safety for all road users. So we're really glad to see that. I know improvements on Melvin Road are going to be dependent on the traffic study that's forthcoming. So we're looking forward to learning more about that. And we do hope that as the project moves forward and the information from the traffic study is available, that the Bike Coalition can continue to have conversations with the city, the applicant, and other partners who might be involved like NVTA to identify bicycle pedestrian access and safety needs on Melvin Road. It's already a highway bypass road. The project will bring more traffic to the road. And we want to make sure that all road users have safe and accessible facilities on the road, especially because there are many destinations like schools, transit stations, and a large shopping center, all within walking and biking distance of this development. So we look forward to having that conversation. This is looking like a really great project. So thank you for your time and thank you again for the presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Sanato. Is there any other public comment, Ms. Don?
Yes, we have Chris James.
Okay, Mr. James.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, it's exciting to see another project. And I'm excited also to see Mr. Hess involved in it. He has a really good approach to some of these things. And, you know, I like it that he's kind of touching on the bases. There's some concerns that have happened in prior projects and trying to alleviate some of the concerns that some people may have, including the commissioners and et cetera. I want to focus my comments for you today on traffic safety. And it's not really a reflection on the project. The project looks awesome. It's just really, Melvin Road is a concern to me, you know, as someone who lives in the city. And then vulnerable traffic already goes through there. And it sounds like this is probably going to be approved tonight. But, you know, I know that there's this pending traffic study. So is approval going to happen before the study comes out? Or are we just going to take it on faith? And I do trust Hess to do the right thing, but it's, the city has a challenge with traffic at the moment. And Melvin is one of the top offenders for safety in the city. I could imagine that it could be a problem. And also then with regard to, you know, I like to see that there's a lot of parking on site. But there's been problems on other sites, similar setups in the Village of Vintage Ranch where parking spills over into the neighborhood. If that spills over into Melvin and the parking for the park, that could impact obviously the usage of the park itself and the neighborhood and, you know, the safety. So a lot of that road, some of that road doesn't have sidewalks right now. So if cars start parking where people will walk on the gravel road opposite, I'm concerned again for safety. And there's no bike lanes on that road. So I'm hoping that part of this traffic study is to introduce bike lanes and sidewalks the entire way down the street with crosswalks designated points because crosswalks or the sidewalks are on some side of the street and then it alternates back and forth. So I'm hoping that the study and is going to be more than just a study, but it's going to be an action plan to really fix the traffic problem on Melvin and the adjacent streets' access to the highway and beyond. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. James. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, sure. Beth Marcus raised her hand again.
Okay, sure.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that you knew I am not against the project whatsoever. And Rick, I know you do a great job. I have full trust in you, mister, but I'm, like I said, I'm just concerned about the traffic, that's all. But I just wanted to make sure you knew I'm not against the project, okay? I'm just concerned about the traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment, Ms. Jones?
We don't have anyone raising their hand from the public, however, Rick Hess is raising his hand to speak.
Okay. We will go ahead and, should I, okay, we will continue him as, as public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Hess. You're muted, sir.
I apologize. I, I wanted to address Chris's comments regarding improvements on James Road, or on Melvin Road. And as, as you know, under the subdivision map act, what the developers are required to do is make improvements along the frontage of their property. And with Melvin Road, all we have is an easement that remaining land is actually owned by the city of American Canyon. And I would think that as the city moves forward with considering their storm drain study that, that is yet to come and the city is also looking to come up with a plan for their future capital improvements and a budget that was discussed at length at the last city council meeting. Melvin Road, my guess is will, will certainly be in the mix of what, what improvements might be anticipated or that, that come along. And, and then the, the last comment would be, I certainly understand the concerns both of Beth and of Chris regarding traffic on Melvin Road, but it, it should be noted that that wasn't our first choice. Our first choice was to have access from Melvin, or from Highway 29, from Broadway, and we had shown for the deceleration as well as the acceleration lane. And I think it was after the NVTA came back and said, whoa, wait a minute, we, we believe that the Broadway Plan discourages those access points and, and it was at the request and, or insistence of the city that we eliminate the access from, from Broadway. And so our, our only alternative was to comply with what the city's wishes were in having a single access on Melvin Road. But I do think that, that the city needs to look at long-term, you know, Melvin Road as a capital improvement project, similar to what they did on James Road just last year in, in widening and, and providing curb under and sidewalks all the way down James. It may already be on the books for, for work, but if not, I think, I think the city should consider that in their, in their long-term capital improvement, improvements. Hopefully that answers some of the questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hess. So just to make sure, is there any other public comment, Ms. Jones?
Nobody is raising their hand. If you have public comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. One, once, twice. All right, nobody is raising their hand.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. I think maybe before we open up questions from the commissioners, maybe Director Cooper or Mr. He could address some of the concerns or, or issues raised by public comment?
Chair Navarro and Commissioner, we're lucky tonight to have our Public Works Director, Erica Smithies. And I think as Mr. Hess pointed out, a lot of the thoughtfulness of what is done to Melvin Road will occur through a capital improvement plan, but maybe Ms. Smithies could explain that a little more thoroughly than myself.
Okay. Please, Ms. Smithies.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, so it's something that we've already been kind of discussing, that we know Melvin's been raised several times since I've been here, it's been about 10 minutes. But something should be done. This is just another project. There just, it's only like an incremental increase compared to the overall that's going on now. So if anything, maybe we could partner with the applicant and see what can be done as part of their project. But it is a grander scope, is we need to write about a thoughtful traffic calming plan for the entire length of Melvin. Like as you said, as Mr. Hess said, as far as like James Road. And our, our budget hearings are coming up and I know it's something that, it's been on council's minds and, and they vocalize it as well about traffic calming on Melvin. So I think we could partner with, with Hess's team and go from there, but as again, you know, they already have a traffic impact theory already going towards their project that maybe we can just write something that would work with their project, but also look at it globally for that entire segment and get it programmed. I don't know if we can do it in this funding fiscal year, but try to write about it because as we all know, if we're going to eliminate any parking on Melvin as part of our traffic calming, it's better to get it done now before we construct something and people are already parking. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it there unless there's any questions.
Maybe there, there was, maybe some room for clarification in, in the traffic study that's, that's pending. So how, how is that supposed to work and what's the requirements and the timing of the traffic study? I think that was raised by Ms. Marcus.
I thought the traffic study, I think there was, I think I needed to clarify that as well. They did a, a specific trip generation for this project because we already have a programmatic EIR for the district, so I, I may not articulate it as well as Mr. Cooper could do, but that's why we can do a specific, what is the generating trip? Does it fit within already that overall programmatic EIR? And I believe it is, but I still think we need a little, do a little more homework. I'm always provided before and we only had a few days to review it before we came to the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
That's why we provide the condition.
Okay. Yes, Mr. He.
Yeah, Chair Navarro just wanted to add to Ms. Smithies' explanation. So for the timing of the traffic report, staff is recommending to approve the design permit without the staff report, the traffic report being finished, but it is required prior to any construction permits. So it's required prior to the site improvement plan as well as the building permits, so the, that's where the timing is right now.
Okay. Okay, I think with that, I can turn it over to commissioner questions. Who would, who would like to begin? Okay, Mr. Altman, or Commissioner Altman?
Thank you. Took me a moment to unmute. I've got a few and I'm going to start with one of the big ones, which is I understand the tax credit financing. What's the deadline on that? I mean, is that a year-end '21 deadline that we're facing? Because the impression I have in general is that, you know, not having the traffic study done, having this all moving along very rapidly, which is impressive, it's also a little bit concerning to me. And so that, I'll start with that and, and see if we can get an answer as to what the deadline on the tax credit financing, what the expiration on, on that is and how big the impact in terms of financing the project is if that gets missed. Because I, let me, let me back up for just a second and say, I love the concept of the project. The building elevations look fine. I've got no issues. I like the moving of the utility poles. You know, there, there's a lot here to like, but there's a bunch I've got concerned with and it's mostly parking and traffic, frankly. So, but that's, I'm trying to, trying to understand the backdrop here to start. I don't know if, if staff can answer that, if the applicant can, can answer that or what, but, you know, one of the first comments was about we're moving this along because of the constraints of the tax financing.
Is, I'm forgetting who made that comment, but Ms., the applicant, would you like to share more about the financing particulars or, or constraints or timing?
Chair Navarro, the applicant, Shadi Fay is here and Nicole can unmute him?
I just did.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank, thank you all. And in response to that particular comment, our financing deadline is not until the end of March. It is not at the end of this year. Our drop dead deadline is on March 28th. We, similar to the process that we have been conducting with regards to entitlements and the cooperation that we've had with the city so far, which has been extensive, and I would like to go on record by thanking Mr. Brent Cooper and Ms. William He, as well as the Public Works Department for their cooperation with us over the past three, four months, meeting and discussing the project and making sure that we try to have a, bring a successful development to the City of American Canyon as smoothly as possible within these time constraints. But to answer that question directly, we are looking at towards the end of March as a drop dead deadline to be able to secure the tax credit financing and we plan on starting construction by shortly thereafter, mobilizing almost immediately thereafter and starting construction as soon as possible thereafter.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any further questions, mister?
Yeah, if, if I can.
Yes.
So the follow-up to that then is, and this is definitely for staff, for the tax financing with now a known end of March deadline, does that require two reading by city council as well to be completed at that time?
Commissioner Altman, the city council does not require, as to my knowledge, a part in the tax credit financing, but perhaps the applicant could respond to that component?
Well, since the project's not fully approved until city council approves, correct?
This is a design permit, which is the authority of the planning commission. So the approval doesn't require going to the council.
Oh, okay. Good, 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 good. No, thank you. So yeah, that, that's, that's the, therein lies the answer. Thank you. Okay, good. So next follow-on is do we have an actual, real time for when the traffic study information is likely to be available? Because again, with, with the questions raised by public comment, with the questions that I know I've got and I'm assuming some other commissioners may have, you know, for me, it would be preferable if we had that information before making a final determination So do we know when that is going to be available or how that can get expedited to be, you know, available in short?
If, if.
Go ahead, Mr. Hess.
This is actually Shadi Fay, so the applicant. We, I believe what Mr. He and Ms. Smithies and Mr. Cooper referred to earlier is that we did in fact turn in an updated traffic impact, uh, traffic engineering report reflecting the impact to, to, to Melvin Road almost just under two days ago, I believe.
Yeah, planning commission because you're going to build apartments.
And we, we note the panel's request for some additional time to fully digest the information that is within, but to answer your question, we've already provided it and we're looking forward to hearing, to hearing some of the city's input.
Got it. Appreciate that. Thank you. And so again, tied in with this, my last question is, and I know it's not the necessarily prettiest solution, and I know that the likely alternative is, is probably not feasible, but has any thought been given to, rather than doing surface parking, to put in a parking structure so that there's not a reduction of parking spaces? Because again, the concern raised, and I think it's a very valid concern, I believe this was a concern raised by Chris James, there's the potential for spill-over parking, which we have seen with other projects into the neighborhood, and there really is no spill-over parking area on Highway 29, so the only place to go would be Melvin Road, which is a smaller local street that is overused frankly at, at this point in time. And if something like a reasonable, you know, I'm not saying eliminate all ground level parking and, and put it all into this major parking structure, but, but if a area of the ground level parking can be, you know, a two-story, you know, sort of parking structure that may enable you to increase the number of parking, which would certainly eliminate the ability to, you know, the likelihood of anyone parking out in the neighborhood. And I think that's something that should be considered. Because the other thought, which is the prettier thought, which is why, what I'm talking about when I say I don't think it's feasible, would be doing underground garage, but I don't think an underground garage for the cost of digging down and potential for water intrusion and so on, given where we are, that going underground would make any sense at all. I think the costs would be astronomical and, and, you know, so on. That's, that's why I'm talking about above ground at this point.
I, I would like to see to Mr. Hess and not speak on the behalf of the development team of the crisis particularly.
Mr. Hess?
Yeah, the, the, having to build a, a parking structure unfortunately would, would literally render this project financially unfeasible and particularly with only 66 units here, it would, it would just throw the whole project out of whack. It would throw the, the, when the application is submitted to the state for financing of the project, you have to give them, initially you have to provide a budget of, of what those costs are and to add something like that would, would render it financially probably unfundable by the state. And, and I'd also like to clear up, just to make clear, as Shadi had mentioned, we have until the end of March, but that, that is in order to pull building permits. From the time they, they approve the financing, you only have 180 days in which to, to pull permits. And that's one of the reasons we work so diligently and hard with planning is to make sure that we get the project approved because we have to immediately, and, and we've already taken some risk in, in beginning construction documents, but in order to, to allow the building department as well as public works to approve of those construction documents, if we don't have those turned in by January 3rd, I'm, I'm afraid that we would not probably be able to make the March deadline that's established by the state in which to, to have them fund the project. So the project potentially could be at risk if we don't get our design review approved tonight. And, and thirdly, because we did have the program via because we did have the program EIR that studied traffic for the entire Broadway district specific plan area, there was, you know, Melvin as well as other side streets or access points were part of that major traffic study that was, that was done. And at this point, it's, it's really, it's really more the city implementing those, those types of projects based on the Broadway specific plan EIR. And all, all that we're trying to do is supplement with a specific traffic study for this project. And, and we certainly are willing to, at least based on what we've seen in this updated traffic study that was turned in, it's not calling for any kind of extensive work.
What does it take?
Of work to do.
Answer.
So but we're certainly more than willing, and I think that, that staff can attest that we've, we've tried to work diligently with them as to how to best provide the improvements for this project, both onsite and offsite. And, and we'll continue to do that as part of our construction documents. I, I, I hope that maybe gives more clarity to the mister Altman's questions.
It, it helps. Appreciate that, mister Hess. It's, it's valuable insight. And it's part of, you know, what I'm trying to understand here is, is just the timeline and where some of the decisions are. Because again, as I've said, you know, I like the project. There are, there are issues that give me pause. But overall, I like the project. And so I'm just trying to see is there any way to, you know, address some of those issues. And so mentioning that the last, and Chair Navarro, this will, this will be my last question, at least for the moment. Is, and, and it's not even a question, to be honest. It's really more of a comment. As, as those of you who have been around, and that certainly includes you, mister Hess, that have known and have seen me in action over the years, one of my biggest concerns with all projects is having multiple entry and egress points simply because of safety considerations. So frankly, I like the initial approach with, what do you call it? The deceleration and acceleration lanes on twenty nine and entering an exit using twenty nine as the main point. But then having the secondary ability to use Melvin Road because that creates a much safer in the event of disaster, people can get out a few ways. So I guess the, the question I've got in here is really more for staff, which is you've indicated there will be some EVA routes. Where are those going and are, will those be open and available in the event of a major, you know, issue, whether it be fire or earthquake or flood? So that residents in this development, should it come to pass, are able to more quickly and safely leave the area if it's necessary instead of trying to funnel sixty six housing units through one small exit on a smaller sidewalk.
Maybe Commissioner Altman, if I could try to answer your question. Maybe William could show the site plan. It is fortunate from an emergency perspective that the site is located next to Broadway. As we know, in, in emerging situations that you described, like an earthquake, there are pathways, you know, right next to the highway that could be used. You wouldn't use them on a daily basis, but in an emerging situation, you can kind of set those things up because they're right next to a major road. So we don't have someone from fire here, I don't think, but I, I looks to me like there is, we have a parking lot, and I would describe that William pointing out the fire EVA. And then to the south where it says sixteen covered stalls, we have another parking lot there right next to Broadway and the twelve foot wide, you know, multipurpose lane and then the road highway next to that. So it does seem like in an emerging situation, it's not hard to imagine that it's feasible to be able to find additional routes that you wouldn't normally use, but could use in an emerging situation.
The, I appreciate that. The one concern that I've got and I'm not seeing on the site plan is sort of the, the connection of the fire EVA or the multi-use path in terms of how far, you know, this is covering the site. But if all you can do is come up with alternative access for the length of the site, we're not necessarily creating safe exits. So I, 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 you know, don't know what the link up here is. And that's what I'm missing is if there's any, any map that's available. And I, I didn't find something that was satisfactory in the packet that would sort of let, hey, here's how the heck people can get out of there if they need to.
Perhaps the applicant has an expert here that's better informed than myself.
See, Sean Cooper has raised this.
Okay, mister Cooper, please go ahead.
This is actually going back to his question about the amount of parking. I just wanted to highlight the fact that for affordable projects, there are typically a lot less vehicles per unit. Because that's typically driven by the number of income earners in a household. So for affordable projects, it's much lower than market rate development because the rent and in turn income restrictions don't allow so many earners in a household. So at a hundred and nineteen stalls for just sixty six units is actually very highly parked by affordable standards. And I guess if you sort of look at the state guidelines or the requirements, they're saying you need to have eighty some units, you know, at a hundred and nineteen, it's actually very well parked. So we would expect there to be limited spill over that you're concerned about just because, you know, different nature of affordable housing.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so if that's all the questions that you have, it doesn't sound like you're satisfied to, to the egress concerns you have, but I think we could go ahead and move on to the next person. Commissioner Wong's had her hand up for some time. I'm not sure if it's related to some of the questions of Altman or her own questions, but please proceed, Ms. Wong.
Thank you, Chair Navarro. William, thank you for the presentation. And mister Hess, thank you for all your clarifying comments. I especially appreciate that you listened to our discussion about the Hampton Inn. And you made that allowance when you did your bike park, bike parking planning and other considerations. And I'm thankful that we had public comment from members of the public. And I, I think I will trust since we have our Napa Bike Coalition representative on the line and that they're happy with all the bike accommodations as well. I do want to point out that the public comment that we received prior to the meeting from the Canyon Cafe owner, he specified that he supported the project, but he had concerns about traffic. And I think it's very telling of what a great job mister Hess and his team have done that all of the concerns that we've had to date about this project have been around traffic. That none of them have really been about his design of the building, the concept, the layout. It's all about traffic. Because I think anybody who has lived in American Canyon, and if you've ever visited next door, you've driven around our city, you've been on Facebook. Melvin Road, as one of the public commenters alluded to, who lives on Melvin Road, it's a very busy road. So my, that is my chief concern with this project is its location. I drove down the length of Melvin Road today and it's a busy road, but what struck me the most is there aren't sidewalks on Melvin Road. There are some sidewalks here, some sidewalks there. And as mister Hess noted, he's not required because of his responsibility, since they don't have frontage, to make any improvements. That's under the city's responsibility. And it was noted that there is going to be a traffic calming solution for Melvin Road. That was mentioned in the resolution, but there weren't any details provided. So not having seen the updated traffic study, not knowing what, you know, the traffic calming measures may look like and not having our residents have the opportunity to see what the traffic calming solutions and the traffic study says, it, it makes this project much more difficult than I want it to be. We all want affordable housing. I, I saw the affordable rents and that all looks great. I saw the number of, you know, I saw the parking spaces come up and I saw the revisions and that all looks great. My concern is that this, I think affordable housing projects stay affordable housing for X number of years. So I don't, I don't want us in our rush to have affordable housing, take maybe, you know, try and just take too lightly our residents' concerns over traffic. Because when I was looking at the site, I also noted that Melvin Park where the tennis courts are, there's only five parking spaces. And one of them is for handicapped. So that's effectively, you know, for public, for parking spaces. So my concern is I think in one of the documents, and I'm not sure if this may have been revised, it said guest parking was eliminated. So if people are going to visit or going to this complex and you drive right by and you say, oh, well, this looks like guest parking. It's right at the entrance. Maybe I'll park there. I mean, my concern is that because of its closeness and the lack of potential parking on Melvin of overflow, you know, our residents who use the parking at the tennis courts will not be able to park there or the additional traffic on Melvin will make reaching the park, you know, that much busier. So I'd like to understand, you know, how we can gain more comfort around the traffic, the traffic calming, the traffic study to make the decision we're being asked to.
Commissioner Wong, if I could maybe provide a perspective. The Canyon Cafe owner was referring, I believe, to, to Highway twenty nine traffic at the intersections. And the good news is the Napa Valley Transportation Authority is working on a project initiation document, which will speak Caltrans language and potentially provide a route to access federal funds for improvements to Highway twenty nine. So there are, there are these larger efforts that are underway to help with, with traffic and mobility and, and other things too that the highway needs, including beautification and and greater safety and the like. And the same is true for Melvin and other roads in the city that need traffic calming. We have, we have had for many years, people say American Canyon should just stop approving everything until the roads are fixed and including Highway twenty nine. And, and unfortunately, that isn't really, isn't a feasible option because there are, are, we have a variety of reasons. And so when we're looking at this project, the site is, it's a permitted use consistent with the specific plan for critically needed housing. And, and there's a very, very valid argument about what about Melvin? And so as mister Hess pointed out, and I think, I believe Ms. Smithies pointed out, there is an obligation on the part of the city to arrive at a traffic calming plan and a capital improvement plan to implement improvements on Melvin. And I think this project may be, I mean, that need has been there a long time, but it, but adding a project like this highlights the importance of perhaps accelerating the attention that's being given. And as Ms. Smithies pointed out, that is something that the council is aware of. We certainly heard about it at the recent city council meeting on economic development for our development community. And so there are these things that are in the works. I think maybe a saving grace with this situation is, you know, there are needs for the applicant to get permits once the project's approved, but construction itself doesn't happen overnight. That will probably happen with our first occupancy somewhere in the order of summer of twenty twenty three. So there is time at least to come up with a plan. If we look at Wetlands Edge, you know, there was a rapid, rapid response traffic calming effort there that was, it didn't take a long time to do. I don't know if that's a feasible option for Melvin. But, but I think perhaps we could take some comfort in knowing that the project itself isn't going to be finished overnight. And there is a recognition that there is a need for the city to take leadership and arrive at some traffic calming solutions for Melvin. So I, I hope, I hope I maybe provided some context for, so where this project fits in, in some of the traffic calming discussion we've been having on Melvin.
Okay. Is there any other questions you have, Commissioner Wong?
Thank you, Director Cooper for your response. Um, William, could you confirm about the guest parking? If there is guest parking on site at this location or did it get eliminated?
I don't think there are any guests to park on the site. It's just, it's just a hundred and nineteen.
Maybe a question for the applicant is how they intend to administer the parking that is available. I don't know if there's reserved parking for residents? Or is it just open parking for anybody? Perhaps the applicant could answer that question.
Sure. Currently, our plan is to provide primarily reserved parking for the residents of the project itself. But really, your concern is loud and clear. And as my colleague, Mr. Cooper alluded to earlier, we think that now with the current site plan, the, we are actually providing a significant amount of parking relative to affordable housing standards. And with the site plan being finalized, with all the iterations and the comments that we received from the various departments very recently as well, I guess we can go back and take another look at our guest parking provision and try to provide some dedicated parking for visitors now that we're much higher than what we were originally anticipating and to help some of these very valid concerns on spill over to Melvin Road.
Thank you. I also had a question. It was noted that a couple of the parking spaces may be removed for the post office. Is that to have like cluster mailboxes? Is that what that reference was for?
Mister Coates, are you? Yes, this is Christopher Coates with HED. Yeah, we are currently preparing for two means of USPS delivering the mail. Currently, we have mailboxes that are located at each building. And we have a backup plan, which is a central mailbox located at building A. And we understand that the USPS has different methods of delivering mail depending on the distance that they have to travel from their truck to the actual mailbox. So we're, we have one stall that we are reserving for them, but we are sort of preparing that we may have to provide two additional stalls for them.
Oh, I see. So the actual cluster boxes where the residents will obtain their mail, will they be in the lobby of the building then?
If it's not clustered at the, if it's not individual clustered at the building, then yes, they would be overall clustered within the community room. uh overall clustered within the community room of the building, which is near the main lobby.
Okay, so it sounds like you don't have the ability to control where they're um placed. Because my comment was just going to be with, we have a cluster mailbox um in my community and they are prone to being broken in. It's not a very secure um unit. And so my push was going to be if you have any any ability to control the placement, to place them indoors, you know, where it's locked and accessible to residents, you know, in a key part of the building. That was just going to be my suggestion.
Yes, I mean, I I think your suggestion is in line with what we're trying to suggest to USPS. However, you are correct, we um, what we have is only suggestions, they make the final call.
Okay, well, if there's any support that we need to push that, maybe someone from our city could write a letter of support because I can definitely testify to the cluster mailboxes being faulty for break-ins. Um, so let's see, aside from that, um, I think those were the gist of my comments at this moment. Um, thank you. I will, I guess, turn it, turn it back over to your chair tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Okay. So, um, Commissioner Goff.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm going to keep mine pretty simple because everything I had has really been addressed so far. Uh, one of my questions has to do with the undergrounding of the utility poles. I know in attachment number 10, it showed five poles, three of them along Broadway and then two more, one to the north, I think, and one to the south. Are all five of those planned on being underground? Is that the plan or just the three on Broadway?
Uh, Commissioner Goff, the condition um is for all five. The two you mentioned that are not on the highway are internal to the site. And so it's just normal part of construction, they would be placed underground or removed.
Just a little clarification on that. Thank you. The other one has to do with the twelve-foot wide multi-use path. Um, we're using the term multi-use path and I'm uncertain on what that actually entails and what that path would look like. Is it a sidewalk path? Is it a bike path? What is the surface of that path? And I know there's a little bit of restriction because of the proximity to Broadway and Caltrans. So I'm just curious on what that path is going to look like.
I see the applicant's engineer, Mr. Belanca, is here.
Please go ahead, Mr. Belanca.
Uh, yes, I'm Andrea Belanca with CBG. Uh, the the twelve-foot multi-use path basically references both bicycles and pedestrians. Both parties could use it. It'll be a concrete uh pathway along the project frontage.
Okay, thank you on that. Um, another couple of comments, uh, you know, I've heard everybody talk about Melvin Road and it's all valid concerns. I think we're all very aware of that. If we increase any more traffic on that road, especially at certain times of the day, um, it's going to be very cumbersome, especially for the residents there. Um, but I also agree with the statements that that's not the applicant's problem, that's really the city's responsibility. And the city needs to take that on. I think it's overdue, which has been mentioned several times here. And I think this project, which is going to be highly beneficial with the city in several manners, but just an affordable housing project of this nature is going to apply, I think, additional emphasis on the city to make sure those repairs and those adjustments to Melvin get done. Um, so I don't really see that necessarily as a big hindrance because I think it's going to motivate the city a little bit to expedite those type of uh conditions on Melvin. Um, as for the parking that overfill possibly onto Melvin, um, I was really curious also about the half-acre open space that's sitting on the south end of this project that is really designated for future use at some point in time. Um, could that be considered as the possible parking additions if need be?
The applicant could perhaps respond to that question.
All right, uh, yes, certainly it could be considered. It's not, um, it wasn't what we intended. And as I said, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we believe that for affordable housing uh standards, uh, the resulting parking provisions are uh quite generous. Uh, but we understand the concerns uh that we're dealing with here and we'd be open to having uh further dialogues or conversations regards um to that particular um plot of land and potential additional parking spaces if absolutely required.
I just looked at the half-acre and went, it's sitting there, uh, half an acre development. I don't know what the plans were possibly looking to put into that spot, but it just seemed like a a natural alternative.
If I could, I'd like to uh throw a couple of comments in also and uh certainly I'm aware of the the problems that we have up there by Walmart and and some of these other uh apartment projects. But uh at least partly what I understand and what what I see happening is uh there there are garages that are provided at those, at some of these other locations. And people tend to use those as uh storage lockers rather than parking their garage or their cars in the garage, which then kind of wipes out what what you thought was X number of parking stalls now become half because people are using for uh mini-storage rather than uh where in, where in this case, uh, we have no garages, it's all surface parking. And and I I don't think that that we could emphasize enough that that certainly state standards for affordable housing um, when, i- if we're asking for a reduction of what state standards were, it would be, I think, way more significant in the consideration. But the fact that we're, that we're exceeding any state standards for a project of this type, uh, I think that uh should be weighted heavily. And and one last thing is, uh, regarding the traffic calming, uh, uh, Mr. Cooper had mentioned the the traffic calming that was done on Wetlands Edge. And it it may be possible for something like that. What you, what I think that that should be noted is in the Broadway District specific plan and their traffic study, uh, they did not make any recommendations uh specific uh for, you know, further development on Broadway. And and our traffic study is not um uh tasked with trying to solve a citywide problem and and the the entire length of of Melvin is uh um, the other commissioners have brought up. That really is a traffic calming that that the city needs to make a decision on on which method that that they would like to institute, whether it's patterned after Wetlands or 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 even the the uh curbs that we did at Donaldson Way with the the punchouts. Those were, that's, it's a much larger global issue, uh, Mr. Goff, as you had brought out, that needs to be addressed by the city. Um, as as an applicant here, we're we're not really in a position to, you know, try to even make recommendations to the city on on what what policies they want to institute going forward.
Thank you. Um, Director Cooper, this is probably more towards you. Just curious on the sixty-six units, how that affects our housing element in our affordable housing requirements? Not only for the city but for the county? Um, and if, because usually my understanding is we're picking up some of the affordable housing for upper county. If that is the case here, is there any way that those other municipalities of county can help provide funds for possibly um the repairs or the adjustments to Melvin Road that we're looking at?
Um, well, thank you, uh, Chris Goff for raising the um regional housing needs issue. Um, American Canyon, like every city in California, gets an allocation of 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 housing that we are um required to accommodate in our planning processes. Um, it consists of a variety of houses, affordable to different income groups. And then the city is obligated to have policies to facilitate um housing. And we are about to embark on a new housing element. And because of the critical need for housing in California, the State Department of Housing and Community Development that has to approve the housing element has sort of ramped up the pressure on cities um with a program to not only affirm affordable housing, but you have to affirmatively affirm affordable housing. So there's, uh, you know, they're, they're just not going to take a word for it. You've really got to prove that you're doing it. Um, the city in in past situations has um agreed to accept a portion of this coming um housing element cycle uh allocation from the county. Um, and a portion of this uh came from the county's agreement to allow the city to annex land for the Watson Ranch specific plan. And so that's going to come due. And then the county also helped contribute funds towards the Valley View project, which is a deeply affordable um and extremely well-run uh project on Teresa. And in return for the funding, the city has accepted a portion of the county's regional need. So um, the deal has been struck and we are, the city is obligated. Um, perhaps there might be new deals from other cities coming to increase our share of theirs. And that might come as a price, but at this time, we haven't had any other jurisdictions ask us to take their regional housing need. I guess they're all kind of working it out on their own. Um, but but to your first point, this project is uh very important for helping us accomplish our existing regional housing need because it's easy to find housing for upper income. And it's harder for moderate income, but it's really hard um to get housing for very low income because that is, it's it's very expensive to subsidize housing so that it's decent and new and of also affordable. So this project is um, will provide a very important component to the city achieving some of the lower um housing need that is
Thank you for that. Um, my final one is, which I've mentioned a couple of times when this was on the document for upcoming projects. Um, I would love a name change. That's just me. The COVID American Canyon sounds much better to me than Napa Cove. Um, I don't know if everybody else feels that way, but uh, that's just a thought. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Goff. I see a hand up by um uh Commissioner Wong, but it sounds like maybe, it looks like maybe Mr. Cooper might have a response to Commissioner Goff. So let me take his next.
Regarding the name change, we're going to do absolutely everything we can to name it whatever you guys would like. We just have to make sure that we're permitted to do that since we already submitted a name as part of our tax application. But we're definitely looking into that and trying to, you know, work with you guys as best as we can.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Okay, Commissioner Wong, go ahead.
Um, I had a um, two questions. Um. I guess Director Cooper, can you remind me how long the project will stay affordable housing?
Um, I'm sure the applicant could answer that. I think it's fifty-five years. Perhaps they could verify that. I'm sure it's more on their minds and in mind.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I apologize. My my internet connection was a bit unstable and I missed the first part of that question. But I believe it has to do with uh the length of the restrictions on uh the affordable housing restrictions. Uh, yes, I would say that that fifty-five years is uh is is the standard uh length of imposing by the state. That's correct.
So if it starts in twenty twenty-three, that means it will run through to twenty seventy-eight. Wow. Okay. Um, that's quite impressive. So, um, I've been thinking about this issue we have on Melvin Road and the issue of traffic safety. And this really struck me as well when I listened to an earlier council meeting where um the council members sat with many of our chief investors in the city who are are major developers like Mr. Hess. And, you know, as as I listen to all this, I mean, it just reinforced to me our city is growing. And now more than ever, traffic safety is so important to us. I mean, I live on Wetlands Edge Road. I can tell you about ad nauseam about the speeding cars we have, how the traffic calming has improved the traffic safety, how we have less speeders. But still, we have a lot of speeders. I mean, the majority of people still speed. But I think, um, and and I I totally entirely agree with what was said before, the issues we have with traffic safety in the city, particularly on Melvin Road. They are not really part of the project. They are the responsibility of the city. So with that being said, if it were something the developer was responsible for, we would just put something in the, in the resolution, say, well, they need to do X, Y, and Z before we approve this. So in that same way, how can we put something in for what the city's responsibilities are? Because I want to approve this project, but then what if something happens? We don't get the traffic safety measures in and instead we open up this great new affordable housing, but for some reason, traffic safety changes didn't happen. I mean, how can we, how can I sort of have both? How can I approve this project? And in good conscience, is there a way to tie them together? Um.
Commissioner Wong, I I think the the issue is really has to do with with um budgeting and capital improvement priorities. And, you know, our council is very accessible. And so um, I think that would be my contribution towards answering your question.
I I also think, uh, Commissioner Wong, that is a little outside the scope of what we're doing here today. It really is about a design permit. Um, this will go to the council who has the purse strings and the political um fortitude and interest to uh to, you know, do what's right. And I I um, I think uh as Director Cooper mentioned, they are well aware of these issues about traffic and and um Melvin Street and everything. So um, so yeah, I don't know anyone else. I don't, I unless there's some trick uh, the city attorney has up his sleeve that we could uh somehow uh do something, but I think um, I think our discussions and our, and and what we talk about is listened to by the commission as well. And it spites uh concern in the community that gets to the commission, to the council as well. So I don't think we are in a vacuum. Is there any other um commissioner questions? I want to open public comment one more time before we um take this item up. Okay, seeing that, um, can we double check? Is there any public comment, Ms. Jones?
Yes, if you have public comment or if you have a comment regarding this item, please raise your hand now. Going once? Twice? Nobody is raising their hand.
Okay. Um, yeah, I I have, I have no um, no questions at this point. Um, I think this is a, this is a Class A uh housing project. I think it could be a model, in fact, and I um commend all involved in 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 the planning of this and in the expediting and getting this through. I think this would be, um, this is uh, I I think it will, it will raise priorities of other things like traffic in the community and it um kind of begins that that um opening to uh to the Broadway specific uh district plan. So um, I'm highly supportive of it and I think I I don't, I I feel like there's some momentum to this. And I would um be very sad if if um the planning commission was holding up that momentum. Um, so um, so for that reason, I I fully, I I just want to express I fully support this and um hope we can, I can get a motion to approve this um, this resolution today.
I will, I would, let me just pull it up, Chair Navarro.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, approving a design permit for development of 66 affordable dwelling units distributed over three, two and three-story buildings on a 3.47 acre site within the Broadway Residential Zoning District, APNs 058, 362, 005, 016, and 017, file number PL 210027. And William, do I need to add those two things that you had on your slide?
I, I think all you have to say is with modifications recommended by staff.
Okay. And with modifications recommended by staff.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Ms. Jones, can we have a roll call on this item?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Hi.
Commissioner Goff.
Hi.
Commissioner Wong.
Hi.
Vice Chair Malari is absent. Chair Navarro.
Hi. Okay. Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. He, Mr. Hess, the applicant and all their team. See how this all goes. Thank you. So shall we move to the next item? Item number four. On the, another topic that's very dear to everybody. Let me pull it right up. The recommendation for the zoning, the zoning code amendment to prohibit new and expanded service stations in the City of American Canyon that conduct motor vehicle fossil fuel retail sales.
Thank you, Chair Navarro and planning commissioners and members of public at home. I'm Brent Cooper, the Community Development Director. And tonight, this hearing is a continuation of our conversation that was started in October. And we had a few follow-up items to address. And I have a very brief presentation just to kind of go over them before we talk about the ordinance and recommendation. Okay, I hope that's, screen share is cooperating.
Yes, we see it.
That's good. Okay. I'm just glad what it does. So I mentioned, this is a continuation of a public hearing that was started at your meeting in October. And we really only had just a few items. There were three. And so I wanted to just go over them and explain how they've been addressed. This is a fuel station ordinance that would prohibit fuel stations that sell gasoline and other petroleum fossil fuel-based fuels throughout the city. Although today, they're really only permitted in zoning districts in the Broadway Plan. So it's, it's kind of a prohibition in the Broadway Plan itself, but it does, it can't address it citywide. And so we had just a few details and I have them listed here on the screen. The first one had to do with, we had a issue on, on non-conforming time limits. So gas stations, if the ordinance is adopted, would no longer be permitted. And so we have three gas stations today and one under construction. So they would become non-conforming structures. And so the rules are that as long as a non-conforming structure continues its use, then it's fine. But if it stops for a certain period of time, then the code says you lose your non-conforming status and must be demolished and removed. So that of course would be a very serious situation for a business owner. The initial ordinance had set that deadline of it ceasing to operate for 180 days or half a year. And so, I'm sorry, for a whole year, pardon me. The rest of the city for non-conforming uses, the, the deadline is a half a year. So to put it simply, the ordinance that was drafted and presented in October would treat gasoline stations more lenient than other non-conforming uses. So they would get a year to be without use and then they could start up again without losing their conforming status versus other uses that get half a year. And so the commission felt that for consistency and fairness, that the ordinance should be amended so that gas stations, if they ceased, they only get six months to start up again before they lose their status, just like everybody else. And so that had, change has been made to the ordinance. I have a, the other change had to do with, well, what happens if there is an emergency? Which, you know, we've all experienced the pandemic and it manifests itself in ways that we just don't predict. And who knows what might happen in the future, which is, I think, a very smart perspective to take. And so we thought, well, you know, maybe, maybe if the non-conforming use is only 180 days, there's some odd emergency that might warrant a longer deadline because it's a force, I'm not sure I pronounced it right, a force majeure. And so we have, the city attorney took a look at that. And then finally, there was some just general review for, for city attorney to look at. So kind of here's where we are. As I've mentioned, I think I've already explained, the ordinance was changed just to revise the deadline from 12 months to 180 days. And so as we've mentioned, that's just to be consistent with other non-conforming uses. I think that's kind of the simplest of the three things that we amended. The second one had to do with, well, if we're going to talk about a, a force majeure, I think we should need to define it. And so the city attorney has done a really good job of preparing a definition so that if someone's going to claim the force majeure, which gives you a more lenient, you know, absence period, then let's define it so that we know it when we see it. And so we have an excellent definition here that the city attorney's prepared. And so I hope the commission feels it's, it's sufficient. It's in the staff report and I've got it on the screen here, so I'm, I'm going to spare you the story time to read it. And I'm going to move on. And then the, as per terms of revisions itself, we do have an explanation for how, when a force majeure event occurs, well, then what's the deadline? And I think, to me, I, I, I agree with the city attorney's viewpoint here. I think the sensible approach is to take it as it comes without sort of saying, well, we don't know what's going to happen, but I'll tell you how long they get. How about when it comes, we'll approach it in a sensible situation based upon the circumstances? And I like the idea here where we have at least two different groups. We have the Community Development Director and the City Attorney together coming to a consensus. It's not mentioned here, but elsewhere in the code, there is a provision that decisions of at least the Community Development Director can be appealed either to the Planning Commission or the City Council. So by definition, you're going to get the ability, if you're affected by some kind of unknown event, to have, I think, both the city attorney and the director looking at this. And if you don't like that, well, then there is appeal authority elsewhere in the code that you have, you know, available. So I think kind of our philosophy here in American Canyon, we try to be pragmatic. And I think this really kind of addresses that situation. I don't believe there were any other amendments to the ordinance that the city attorney found. And so this would be the limit of the changes to the ordinance that was presented to the, to the commission there in October. So kind of with that, we have our schedule, of course. Today, we have our hearing. If the commission recommends approval or makes a decision, whatever it might be, it goes on to the City Council on January 18th. Normally, the council meets on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, but January is the exception. It's right after New Year's. So we have a lot of holidays leading up to that. It kind of runs amok with our lead times. So the first meeting that comes for the City Council would be January 18th. We have a moratorium in place, but it expires in February. And so what we would do when we go to the council in January is we would recommend that they extend the moratorium to a date beyond our effective date for the new ordinance. So assuming the council would approve the first reading on Jan. 18th, the next opportunity for them to do the final reading is February 1st. Ordinances are effective 30 days later and that takes us to March 22nd. So that's kind of just so you know where everything fits. But in the meantime, we want to make sure that the existing moratorium remains in effect. And with that, recommend the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to recommend the council approve the ordinance. And if you have any questions or you need a reminder on the old ordinance, we can, of course, we can go and review that too. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Um, let's see, is there any public comment before the commissioners while you kind of formulate your questions?
Yes, actually Jim Wilson is raising his hand. Mr. Wilson, I've asked you to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, planning commissioners and staff. I'm Jim Wilson, Napa County resident. Again, you've really got the ball rolling on climate action this past year. Consistent with your action today, just last month, American Canyon declared that a climate emergency exists and that it, your city, the state, the world. You recognize that our children are an especially vulnerable group and that increasing trapped heat will almost certainly have a profound negative impact throughout their lives. And then you further proclaimed that the City of American Canyon joins a growing list of communities committed to a goal of net zero climate pollution by or before 2030 and further commits to evaluate all planning and policy decisions, all planning and policy decisions through the lens of this pledge and to implement both immediate and sustained actions in support of its achievement. And so with your ban on new gas stations and expansions of existing gas stations and the positive refinements to the ordinance today and every new action that puts firm dates on stopping doing wrong, American Canyon sets an example of integrity and moral courage for all of us in Napa County and beyond. Thank you again for your vision, your results orientation so critical to restoring a livable climate.
Any other public comment? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
No one is raising their hand at this time. If you have public comment for this item, please raise your hand now. Going once, going twice? Nobody is raising their hand, Chair Navarro.
Okay, okay. Well, let's go ahead and close public comment. And go to any commissioner questions, concerns, comments. All right. See no questions, no comments. It does look pretty, I, I know we've talked a lot about this issue and we had some issues and it seems like they've been adequately addressed from my perspective. I don't know. Is there anything, anything further you'd like to add, Mr. Ross?
Oh, yeah, there is.
Work on this? Okay.
I think the concept about force majeure is driven by an existing analysis by the Supreme Court of the United States. And then a contemplated argument that's going to come up is force majeure was associated with acts of God. There was an issue with respect to COVID-19, whether or not it was an act of God or created by man, meaning the pandemic. That was commented upon in the first, there's two cases that initially dealt with COVID before the Supreme Court. They both involved the ex-governor of New York, Cuomo. So it's the first Cuomo case that raised that. And, you know, the, so the concept of incorporating a declaration of state or local emergency is meant to address that. So, but, you know, we don't get into an argument about, you know, for example, global warming. Is that man-made or is that an act of God? So one is the existing set of cases, you know, where the issue came up by incorporating states of emergency and then specifically, we already know about the pandemic, right? So that's been defined. That's the, you know, I'm going to say the reasoning behind the computation of that section and that definition. And I, I think Brent's right. I think when we have the kind of safeguards that are recommended with planning director review with Mike, with the concurrence of the city attorney, then you have the application of a legal standard to a specific case where that time period may be an issue. That would be the thing that I would add. But otherwise, I believe the ordinance, the recommended ordinance would be internally consistent and should be considered for approval by the commission.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm not seeing any other questions. I have no questions.
Chair Navarro, Commissioner Wong has her hand raised.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, go ahead.
Not really a question. I just wanted to thank Director Cooper and City Attorney Ross for all their hard work that they put into this resolution. I know that we spent a lot of time on it. We've had a lot of questions. We've made a lot of modifications. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on behalf of, you know, getting this done.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong, and I agree. I think the whole commission agrees. Would the one like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll be happy to make a motion that we adopt PC Resolution Number 2021, next in order, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the City Council of the City of American Canyon adopt an ordinance to amend the American Canyon Municipal Code, Chapter 19.04, Definitions, Chapter 19.05, Commercial Classifications, Chapter 19.11, Commercial Zoning District, Chapter 19.49, Non-Conforming Uses, Structures, and Lots, and Broadway District Specific Plan, Table 2-3, Permitted Uses to Prohibit New and Expanded Service Stations in the City of American Canyon that engage in retail sale of motor vehicle fossil fuels, PL 21-0028.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
It is with great pleasure that I say aye to this resolution.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Malari is absent. Chair Navarro.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Okay, great work, everybody. This is, is going to, there's a great milestone for the city and I think the community is going to also be very happy about this as well as all the public input that we got. So I think everybody's voice got heard and, and I think this will set a pattern also for other communities. So with that, management and staff reports, active planning projects, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. And, and, you know, with respect to the fuel station ordinance, it really is a, it's a team effort. Everybody is, everybody is contributing to it. And so that's really the, it's, it's very gratifying to work for a city where people care as much as you do. And really enjoy it. Thank you. I don't have too many updates on our active projects for you. We do have some of the more major ones, the Jevononia Logistics Park. I'm told I should get an administrative draft environmental impact report tomorrow. So you can nestle in between now and the new year, I guess, read it. But actually, there are a lot of people who look at these, the police, the fire and public works primarily. City attorney reviews them for, for legal consistency and adequacy. And there's a lot of people that look at these things. So excited to have that milestone. When it is ready for public review, we will come back to the planning commission for a hearing as part of our protocols for environmental review. So we'll have that to look forward to in the coming new year, hopefully in the first quarter. As I mentioned, maybe to the planning commission, the applicant informed me they have a, an interest by a major corporation that they can't name, but is, is very excited about locating to American Canyon. And so we'll be working really hard to help make their schedule possible. We've done that for Amazon. We did it for IKEA and others. And so we're excited to have major companies join our American Canyon family. Let's see, the Hampton Inn Hotel Use Permit and Zone Change was approved by the city council at the December 7th meeting. And so that's a nice milestone. And so we're looking forward to that project. I asked the applicant engineer, you know, what's scheduled for getting it going? And, and I think all of the principals went, took a vacation towards. I want to get back, he's gonna, he's gonna check and get back to me. So I think we're all excited to see that one move forward. We do have some new information for the SDG 217 warehouse. That's on Commerce Boulevard. The planning commission reviewed this and recommended approval. All the way back in February of this year, there has been a new court case that the city attorney's been following that, that requires some supplemental environmental information to be prepared. And so we discussed that with the city council at its last meeting and will be returning in 90 days with an update on that one. You might recall that this application was appealed by a union group. And so we do have an obligation to have a hearing on, on the project with respect to that. So, let's see, I got a call from Buzz Butler today. He's really excited about the, the new building. He's constructed over by Tractor Supply. It's still training out really nice. They've gotten a long way with having it done. So it's, I don't have a date when it'll be finished, but, but Buzz was really happy. So that's got to mean it's, the end is near. And let's see. I do, with respect to the general plan, because I know you're very interested in that, I am going to be meeting, I have been talking to our consultant. With that, the project manager for Minty Harness has retired. We have a new one. We're excited about her, her start. And so that's good news. We'll be modifying the scope a little bit to reflect more intensive housing element work that's needed by the state. And so we are going to be lining up 2022 to bring a lot of workshops to the planning commission. I think we're all really excited that, that you're excited. And I think that's a great opportunity and venue to be discussing a lot of these topics. They're super interesting. Also been talking to Janelle because the Parks Foundation, they have all kinds of great stuff going on. And so we're going to be trying to hook it on their train to have some pop-up events in conjunction with various events that the Parks Foundation is going to be hosting. And so part of the scope with Minty Harness is that they actually prepare some professionally made materials that we'll be able to use and take around town and participate on a lot of events. So 2022 is going to be a really good year. I'm excited. And so we'll be, we'll be general planning.
All right.
So if you have any questions about other things going on in town, I'm glad to answer any of your questions you have.
Can I ask a question not related to the projects?
Sure.
Well, thank you for the update. And I actually was, it was really nice to hear Mr. Hess's acknowledgement of the extensive discussion we had about the bicycle features for that project and how he just came forward in his bike parking. He, you know, modified it based on the concerns he heard us reflect. And so what I wanted to ask you about or just bring up maybe as a discussion point, I think you and I kind of talked about this, about how I felt that our bicycle code was kind of outdated and that really made our discussion harder than I would have liked for the Hampton Inn project. And it, and it was great to see Mr. Hess's, you know, voluntarily that they made their project standards higher. What was interest, and I was going to say, I don't know what we need for bicycle code, but I looked at San Francisco with some help from Patrick Van at the Napa Bike Coalition kind of pointed me in the right area because it was sort of like, well, we're just American Canyon. We're not as bike friendly as they are known to be as bike friendly, say as like a Berkeley or a San Francisco. But you wonder, what comes first? Is it having the biking infrastructure? Or is it, you know, just having more people bicycle and then you build the biking infrastructure? But anyways, what was interesting about the San Francisco bike code, if they had a project, Napa Cove, in front of their planning commission, their requirement for bike parking is 66 bike lockers, one per unit. So I'm not saying that's what we need. I, I think, I think our requirement is something like seven or eight, maybe. I, I don't remember what the number is. So I, I think we do have some room to grow.
Well, I think we have, I think there, there's, I think there's a willingness on the part of the community to change the standards. And I think the issue comes into how do you best go about arriving at what would be the right new standards? And, and maybe there's a middle ground somewhere where maybe there's a, there's something that we can agree to, but perhaps study further later. There's a number of options. I think what's nice is we don't have any project on the eve of being approved. We have a little bit of a breathing room, maybe to, to look at some strategy on how we might be able to approach this. So that we're kind of ready for the, for the next one, so that we're not surprising someone, you know, at the 11th hour halfway through the process. So, but I definitely see that this community has a commitment. And I think also too, you know, the climate change proclamation means something. And, and bicycle facilitation is definitely in line with the thinking of, of trying to become more carbon neutral.
Yeah, we need to shift more of our, also fuel travel, maybe to things like bicycling. Yeah.
But I, I do, and I do like the idea of looking at other jurisdictions, but something that's, you know, crafted unique and, 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 you know, appropriate for us to, so that's cool.
In my hometown of Vancouver, Canada, that city is, is also very, very much in tune with carbon neutrality and, and, and smart growth and the like. And the city did a tremendous effort to grow off-street and on-street bicycle infrastructure. And just going back over the years, because I've been in California for a really long time. But going back, you can see over time, all of a sudden, there was a tipping point where bikes everywhere. But I think it, you know, it takes a network before people are comfortable using it. So I think there, I think there literally is a tipping point where there's enough infrastructure. People go, oh, I guess I can do it. And when people are considering, you know, there's always a group that's moving out and moving in. There's, there's always a turnover. You begin to attract a group that's more perhaps in tune. It becomes an attraction for people who like bicycles if you come to a town that has those facilities.
Right. Like Portland also, Davis, U D in Oregon, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd love for American Canyon to be one of those cities that gets, that is known for being bike friendly. So we have, I mean, we're a small town and, and actually we're, it's pretty level. It's very easy to bike places, you know, and I'm not even like, I'm not like Barry on Open Space who I think is like the master bicyclist, you know, I'm not even at that level. I think it's pretty easy to bicycle. Yeah.
Ever tried biking in Berkeley up the hill? That's for a select few. But yeah, American Canyon is nice because it's a, a much more topographically friendly place.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking forward to, hopefully we can maybe bring some improvements in through the general plan as you alluded to, or maybe have an opportunity in, in other areas. It sounds like we're going to have a busy year ahead of us.
It's good to hear.
Any, any other, so, so everything covered for management and staff reports, any commissioner item? Okay. Maybe I'll just say, I think we've gotten a lot done this year. It's been a good year, a tough year. And if next year's better, that's great. But I think, you know, given all things considered, a lot, we, we've processed a lot through this commission very thoroughly and the staff have worked very diligently through all the struggles of working from home and not, you know, in person. So I just, I, I feel honored to be part of this, this team and this group as well. Is what Mr. Cooper said. So thanks for all your work and I hope everybody has a great holiday season. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, New Years and all the other celebrations that go on, Kwanzaa and all during these periods of time. So with that, I, if no one objects, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year.
Around town. Next meeting at point in January, right?
Yeah, hopefully soon. Get through this other variant. Bye-bye.
Take care.
Aye.